Move by Karen, second by Maura. Any discussion? All in favor? That is a present, you have.
Erin, Erin is yes to. She's just not.
Fantastic. We anticipate returning at 7:00 P.M. See you shortly. Thank you very much.
Hearing none, we shall continue. That brings us to Agenda Item 4.2, which is Public Comments, and I believe my colleague, Maura Lang, has a list.
Yes, we have Megan Fitzgerald.
I do. Please feel free to come up if you'd like and use the microphone. That'd be great. And I know most folks know this, but a reminder that our public comment has a three-minute time limit.
Thank you. I am prepared. So, Ithaca City School District Board members, attendees, and leaders, I am reaching out to you after months of working with leaders and teachers on issues related to Internet access on student-issued district's devices. I would hope you agree that children should not be able to find and play first-person shooter games on school devices during school hours. However, I've learned that this is a widespread issue across our schools. I'm coming to you tonight as a parent of two children with disabilities. I have been a Regional Director of Special Education at a high-performing charter school nonprofit for the last eighteen years. I'm also a trainer with the New York State Department of Education on technical assistance for students with disabilities, and a consultant with the New York Charter School Association. It has been astounding to me, the issues that my own child is having at school in spite of significant effort on behalf of my husband and I, and his teachers. It's well documented that ongoing access to violent video games is detrimental to the healthy social and emotional growth of young brains. It's also leading to significant distractions for educators and leaders who have the burden of monitoring student devices in addition to trying to build positive relationships with students and deliver their lessons. I expect you to take action to protect the mental health and safety of our children in accordance with the Children Internet Protection Act. Use your extreme examples, yet I think about how much learning is lost as students switch between assignments as teachers monitor them while they're just looking at cat videos. I hear about this happening constantly. I'm a Caroline Sports Association coach. I have close proximity to students through Cub Scouts, and I just see these issues pop up over and over again. So I'm asking that you create and publish a plan that you put on the website by March that would provide for transparent, effective protections for students with district-issued Internet-enabled devices, starting by May of this year. In the outline that I have proposed, I would like that to be given so that not only caregivers, but students and teachers also have transparent training that would allow for subsequent school years, that would ensure that parents know about ways to monitor the devices before the start of the school year, that you have Internet access only offered to a limited number of district-approved websites that do not allow students to be exposed to violent and other harmful content, store devices at school and distribute them to students as needed, prevent the devices from being used from children for sharing and providing these kinds of games, ensuring that students aren't able to play these games on the bus, providing information and training to parents in their own native language about how to monitor this at home, and being able to ensure that teachers have the support that they need to prevent these kinds of situations from happening. In a scan of what's available in the board documents, I haven't seen that yet, and I'm available to help support if necessary. Thanks.
Wow, perfect timing.
Thank you.
We are not there yet.
I'm sorry. And then virtually, we have Paul Mutolo.
Okay, great. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Mutolo. In a minute, I'm going to introduce my son, Andrew Mutolo. We're here to talk about the needs of students with disabilities in the Ithaca City School District. Andrew wants to share some experiences that he's been having over the last year, and in a minute, he's going to do that. I just want to frame this for you, that while these are his experiences, we believe that the story we have to share can be helpful to the district in making better choices to help better serve all students throughout the district who have individualized education plans. We know this is a district that values inclusion. We greatly appreciate the work that the district does every day to make inclusion possible. And it is in that spirit that Andrew wants to share some of his experiences that he will hope you can utilize to improve even further what the district is doing to make inclusion a reality for its students across the district. Do you want to go ahead, bud?
I am so frustrated. I need someone like Brian. I like all the people I get to work with, but it is hard to meet a new TA each year.
What kind of TA do you need?
My TA is a critical part of my team and enables me to take part in class to my fullest ability. I want to stay at Boynton.
All right. Do you have anything else you want to share? All right. In summary, we just want to share that teaching assistants and aides are among the most important individuals on a student's team. They make inclusion happen. Without them, inclusion is just a great idea on paper, but it can't be put into full practice. And so we believe that in these difficult times of labor shortages and not enough skilled people, this district can do a great job at being a shining example of showing how much we value these students by making it clear to the individuals that they work with, these TAs and these aides, that they will do much better than just a living wage, that they will have benefits that are attractive, job security, and relationships that matter and add to their job satisfaction so that they can remain with the students that they work with and improve the educational experience for students like Andrew. Anything else you want to say? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is our list. Board responses, if there are any.
I'll just thank both of our commenters this evening.
I'll just thank both of our commenters this evening. I know Paul and Andrew and I appreciate the thoughts and specific suggestions of the parent who made some very specific ideas about internet use in the district and how we might approach that. And I'm sure we'll be looking into that further. Thank you for coming.
Yes, I thank you as well. I'm sure we'll be in contact. And I am speaking as one board member, just knowing how bureaucracy works, which you are familiar with, that I see here, there's a March nineteenth deadline. We will have some conversations. I know that means March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, which I know is not what you expected, but I look forward. I look forward to the conversation I'm working with our team and thank you to the folks who just spoke as well. Fantastic. That brings us to the next agenda item, which are student reps. And I believe we have new student reps from LACS, or at least new to me.
New to you.
New to me, so I apologize that I have not, we have not met before. So how about we go with LACS's board update?
The School of Rock performance just happened and a lot of hard work and effort was put in by the cast and crew and the show went really well.
I'm Odin Entwood. I'm a junior and last Tuesday, us juniors had our Regents exams, our English Regents. And as well, we, a lot of juniors did our math PBats, which is our alternative to the math Regents for our school.
We also had on January twenty second, Community Care Day. There were workshops for climate justice, caring for elders and the whole school assembly for by a speech by Dr. Nina Nun about empathy in our community.
And on Thursday and Friday during Regents Week, all our students had their student led conferences, which are a very important part of our community and show the leadership and self reflective skills of our students.
And lastly, something we wanted to bring up was that at LACS, we don't have a driver's ed course. When polled, many people said that they wanted one. And we understand that it would be unrealistic to ask for an entire course along with a new car and insurance. But like with other classes that are not available at LACS, there are spaces reserved in IHS classes for LACS students. And we would really like for LACS to have spaces reserved for the driver's ed class as well.
Thank you, LACS. Ithaca High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We hope everyone's doing well. This is our first week back from midterm week for us, though. We're still getting back into gear. We'll just dive straight into some new updates. The Student Council has recently launched efforts to provide free menstrual products to all students at IHS. Currently, there are small baskets placed in each stall of the gender neutral bathrooms in G and H building and K wing bathrooms. It seems to be a successful launch and a closer step to wide accessibility, but these products have been purchased using the Student Council budget, which is not sustainable in the long term. We talked to Mr. Trumble on how we can make sure this is not just a temporary solution, in which case there need to be another source of funding and a promising supplier. We need to do some research about what we are mandated to supply and how we can make those purchases. We are hoping to talk further on investing in dispensers or adhesives to stick baskets onto the walls and so that they're not being wasted or abused.
In terms of other recent events running to places which many IHS students are a part of, recently had their performance of Big Fish, which I hear went really well. Spring sports will also be starting soon. Two weeks ago, we, Mr. Trumble wasn't there for our meeting, but we did have a great conversation with Ms. Hardesty and Mr. Bryman. One thing we talked about was doors at IHS in keeping with like improving accessibility. We were talking about opening more doors in the inner quad part of IHS during the school day so that students are able to access the building from more areas than just the two entrances or just like the three entrances which are currently open. And that way they can walk through the quad when they're going to other classes.
We're also talking again to Mr. Trumble about the parking lot because in the past, sorry, in the past few weeks, as the snow has gotten worse, parking lines have not been very visible. And for those of us who, like me, already have enough trouble parking on a regular basis, it does not look very pretty. The other thing is just the usual traffic flow because the two lanes kind of on the sides of the parking get very, very crowded and it's very stressful in the morning, especially for people in like minivans or bigger cars. When the other person that they're crossing does not exactly go to their right side, but rather stays in the middle. And we're talking about the few potholes in the parking lot. We understand that we cannot fix them now due to the cold and the weather and all of that. However, we are hoping to kind of set something in motion and work with the facilities department, which we know will go great because they are wonderful and just get that all sorted out. I spoke. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. With regards to the initiatives and conversations we've been getting engaged in of late, I think almost all of you, if not all, are aware of the recycling initiative we've been forwarding for the last several months. We are still in the pilot phase and it's hard to tell whether or not it's been extremely successful yet. However, we are hoping still to get more lids for those bins. We've been in conversations with Mr. Taylor and Dr. Bryman because of difficulties in getting tops of the right size, but we hope that that problem will find a remedy sooner or later and we'll be able to continue on with the pilot and maybe implement this in the long run, if necessary, next year as well to try to expand the pilot into a larger program encompassing the whole school if it does prove successful. Secondarily, we would like to thank Dr. Krant Weiss for the very productive conversation around standards based grading that we had between December nineteenth and our last meeting. We learned a lot and we also had a great time explaining our own viewpoints and concerns around the systems. And we hope that this will bloom into longer and more and continually productive conversations around the same issue. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ithaca High School and LACS board responses.
So I'm glad you brought up driver's ed again.
Because I recall now that you, that you brought it up at a previous meeting. And I'm just wondering if, and there was some discussion of possible ideas for expanding offerings in driver's ed. And I'm just wondering if one of our admin team could suggest, is there somebody that these folks should talk to about this issue?
Yes, me. Yeah, I'm sending notes out right now and it's coordinated time. I was a part of the original implementation, so you can get through the board.
And it sounds like you folks with the issues you're bringing up, you, you know who to talk to when you're engaged in those conversations. And I applaud you for your initiatives on these important issues and and challenges. So keep going. And let's see, oh, just one other thing that I'll add about LACS that we, that deserves mention that one of your board rep colleagues, Stella, on, at the celebration at Beverly J. Martin Elementary School for Martin Luther King Day, she was one of two recipients of the newly implemented Kirby Edmonds Award. And I know that she richly deserved it for her service and her energies. She played basketball tonight?
She is.
Additional board responses. I am greatly appreciative that we get information and we also get a to do list. So we follow them up with everybody as soon as possible. So thank you all. That brings us to agenda item six, which is the consent agenda. And we will entertain emotions.
Presented. I'll move the consent agenda.
Moved by Moira. Second by Jill. We can have time for debate and discussion. I feel compelled to ask, this is me borrowing from the language of Dr. Brown, that anytime an organization provides money, we should be very aware to offer our sincere gratitude on this month's consent agenda. On this meeting's consent agenda is over roughly about $27,000 from the Ithaca Public Education Initiative to support at least three projects. We know every year they support much more than this, but on this consent agenda is a financial contribution to support the Enfield Pavilion and Outdoor Classroom, Air Heart Project and the Kids Discover the Trail Program. Significant contributions from a local organization and we are greatly appreciative. With that being said, any additional debate, discussion, conversation questions from, from board members or additional kudos to IPEI as well?
Let me just add that they now have a new director. We know Steve put in many years of service to the organization. They do have a new director, so I don't know who the liaison is, but it'd be great if we could get them to come and speak to us about their ideas of how we can improve the relationship even more moving forward.
The board officers will work to see what would be an appropriate agenda to have to come. There is not a board liaison for outside organizations at this time. So, but we will follow up with that as soon as we can. Thank you for the suggestions, Sarah. Hearing no other comments or questions, we'll call the question, all in favor of the consent agenda? That is unanimous for who's here and my apologies. I don't know if our other board colleagues are still joining us online or not. So Tricia, you got the record of the vote? Thank you very much, appreciate it. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity, Professor Bradwell. Just one item this evening and just to note that I appreciate the curriculum committee's focus on equity and excellence in sharing artifacts of our work as a standing agenda item. And I have one more that I'm going to add to the list that represents our school district's commitment and an artifact of our approach to equity and excellence. This afternoon, Ms. Talcott and I had the privilege and honor of attending a very special ceremony that was held at TST Bozey's. We have two educators and I think we have some pictures here to show as well. We have two educators who were, I'm looking at them, I can't see them anywhere else. Man, don't show that ball head. There we go, yeah. Guys, all right. We have two educators recognized this afternoon for receiving the National Board Certification recognition. Two teachers, and this is a pretty prestigious award and they're receiving it for the second time. Patty Burr, who's an elementary educator at South Hill Elementary and Jen Lorran Moran, who's a educator, a math educator at DuWitt Middle School. They were recognized and just to give, provide some context, there are about 2,000 educators in New York State, teachers in New York State who have earned this certification. That's about whopping 1%. This is a pretty impressive award, not just in our state, but in our country. And we've had a few educators receive this certification and this recognition over the past few years, including the two today. And when you read and hear about what they've done to show what they do and to demonstrate their commitment to the work that our district is about, you will understand why I would put this up as an amazing artifact. And we had someone from the Nicet Regional, Mr. Johnson was here. And I know Nicet is a big supporter and supporter of this particular initiative. So anyway, if you see Jen or we see Patty, please say thank you and then congratulations for all the hard work that they do. Thank you, Professor.
Can I just add something in case folks don't realize? To receive the certification is an enormous, enormous commitment of time and intellect over a period of, how long does it usually take, Cass? A couple of years at least. Yeah, and it's, it's enormous. And I know some people who, who've gotten it and they, I've seen what they've done. They've also said it has been, you know, an incredible experience that led to enormous professional growth. So it was tough and, but they were very, they felt that they got a lot of value for their efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, and thank you, Moira. Our, keeping our agenda moving, it brings us to agenda item eleven point one, which is the budget development process, and I presume will be joined by an esteemed guest.
Yes, I'm inviting my colleague Amanda Verba down to engage in these upcoming. I'm excited about these two. How can you not be excited about budget development? All right. And maybe I'll do some initial framing and then we're going to roll right into the other agenda items to talk about calendar, process and share some numbers. And, and I'll go back and I hope Erin's still online, but Erin, she inspired me particularly a few meetings ago, I think it was a committee meeting, a finance committee meeting, when she, she put her hand on her head and said, how are we going to do all of this? We were engaging in conversations about planning for the next ten years of capital improvements and how to fund that, how to fund ten years of capital improvements while staying within the seven percent, seven percent of our total budget amount framework, which the board had asked us to do years ago. So how do we continue to do that work, continue to maintain and upgrade our buildings and keep the same level of debt service in our budget? That was a challenge. And then I remember after finishing that challenging conversation for our board and as we now hope to bring that resolution to our community this spring, Erin asked us, so now how are we going to do this thing around fiscal planning? Where we're trying to pay our educators more, while we're trying to keep our commitment to inclusive, equitable education, while we are maintaining our commitment to small schools and small class sizes, which I would put up our sizes and our student to teacher ratio, our support professional ratio to student as some of the best in the state. So there's a lot, I could go down the list now. Our robust offerings at the secondary schools, our small class size offerings there as well, including 20 AP courses in all of the elective. Or let me not forget for the folks at the high school, the 120 plus after school programs as well. A robust extracurricular program with athletics, strings, music in third grade. I can go on and on, but we offer a pretty, something pretty special here. And Erin's question that night was a challenge for me. How do we keep that moving too? In the midst of fiscal challenges that our community and state's facing. And we'll talk about, you know, the governor's proposal, this current governor proposal, which doesn't look good when it comes to state financing, public education. Anyway, my team and I, thanks to the great leadership of Amanda Verba, we've taken this on as a challenge to present to our community an approach to doing it all. You've asked us to be excellent and be equitable and we have a plan to do just that. In addition to maintaining that seven percent threshold in our budget for debt service, we're now proposing stabilizing the tax rate for the folks who were at the most recent finance committee. We had our county assessor come in and I hope y'all heard it, I heard it. I was sitting over there, he said, you know, business owners and property owners would really appreciate if they could just have a stabilized tax rate. If stabilized in tax rate, then they may consider paying more in taxes, but they want to know what they're going to be paying for the next, I think he said, three to five years. That would be beneficial. We have a proposal to put in front of you to, if that could allow for us to do all the things that I mentioned before, including taking care of our employees and at the same time stabilizing our taxing. And I want to show you, because I was asked the first day I was on the job by someone on the radio, do all these things and then lower our taxes. And, and I said, what does that mean? Well, lower the tax rate. So I'm going to show y'all something in a minute, some trend data and hold me accountable to what I was asked to do back in 2010 and 11. So we have a plan to put in front of you that we want to discuss over the next couple of weeks and months prior to putting a resolution in front of our community that I feel will benefit this community, set us up for the next decade or more. Now that would also, you know, because there are some levels that we must pull, that we have pulled over the previous decade when it comes to doing all of this while maintaining program offerings. And they include, how do we increase our revenue? When a state's decreasing it, let me come back to that now. We're smart people, we can, we figured out ways through investments, through the ways in which we use Bozey's aid, state aid. We figured out how to increase our revenue. And you've also asked us to decrease expenditures while enhancing programs. So that's, you know, that's hard to do, but we will show you how we're looking to decrease expenditures. And you've also asked us to decrease expenditures while enhancing programs. So that's, you know, that's hard to do, but we will show you how we're looking to decrease expenditures in some areas while enhancing our programming. And then that last one, utilize fund balance. Fund balance conversation is always fun because most folks don't understand them. So we hoped over the next couple of months to help our community understand how we have been growing our fund balances and using them strategically to do all the things I mentioned. So that's a lot of framing right there. You can see I'm excited because I hope our community joins me. And I may be the only superintendent in New York State having this conversation. Because we figured it out. Now it will require a lot of conversations and at times it will be challenging and sometimes it may be painful, but I promise you that we will do everything that the community's asked us to do. And we will stabilize that tax rate. So with that kind of frame, I'm going to turn it to the smartest person I know around us though. I'm just a communicator at times. Ms. Verba, tell them how we're going to do it all.
First, hi everyone. For those of you that don't know, I'm Amanda Verba. I'm the operations officer and the fiscal officer for the district. I am excited to say this is my 10th year and I actually feel like I didn't even need to say very much at all. Dr. Brown's got this though. And I'm also so excited to, to continue the budget development process with everyone. I think we keep, I hope we keep getting more transparent. I hope we keep creating tools that get better every year. I hope that we keep a robust presence on our website where it's easy to find, easy to click on, easy to see a video. Look at the graphic that went along with it. Hear from experts, talk about each of the topics. Whether they be the budget development experts of each of the departments that are contributing to the budget through our finance committee, our taxes, our assessors, right? And we had some really stellar folks. We have our folks who guide us in our investments. We have folks who guide us in our fiscal advisement around the debt service, which is the way that we pay for our capital projects. All of that comes together every single month to then lead into the more official budget development process, which you see on, we're going to show you two different, both agenda items and two different slides. And then finally, the third agenda item will actually go through some of the revenue to date and some of the ideas with some slides behind it that Dr. Brown was just sharing with all of you. And again, this is initial thinking. We are currently in the process of building the budget. What we try to do every year is we carry over our expenses that we know from last year with all of the contractual obligations. You'll see sort of those, that yellow bar at the bottom here of this one pager that thank you to the communications department helped us pull together. You'll see all of those sort of drivers or expenditures being developed right now in live time with our principals and our directors. We also identify who we are, right? Our priorities, our values. That's that middle area of this one page slider, a slide here of sort of what, what we do, who we are currently, and also never losing sight of what we always want to become. Right? For our students. And then that top part, I'm working sort of from the bottom, from the bottom up because it's to me that the two bottom parts, the most important. That top part is just a reminder of what a school budget is, right? It's not an expenditure report. It's an estimation of finances at a moment in time study that is forever moving and forever shaping and forever growing. It's never static. But we really try to incorporate all of our needs and our values and our priorities, along with all of our commitments right into this document that has lots of numbers, but always represents people. That is, I think the one thing that we do here in Ithaca really well is we absolutely have the qualitative and quantitative narratives behind all those numbers that drive what we do. So this is the first part of the budget communication process. This is the first agenda item of three. The second one is the calendar. Tricia, if we can just move to that calendar, Emily, to show you sort of what we would, would like to continue to utilize and refer to so that we know how we're tracking our progress now through the budget vote in May. We changed the format a bit. We tried to incorporate some of the state mandates, but also some of the meeting content and discussion points that'll be, you know, coming up in the, in the future meetings. We also will track when meetings are canceled, right? Last year, it was a very difficult year. Snow days happened to occur on days when board meetings happened. And we had fewer meetings than we really wanted, but there was obviously, those are out of our control. Which is why communication efforts like the budget overview that you saw and the webpage, the specifically the FAQ or frequently asked question area of our webpage will be ongoing and we've already started populating that. So I, you know, a lot of these conversations are happening at finance. I don't want to discount also facilities. Facilities talks a lot about specifically the capital project area of our budget as well as some of the futuring that we're doing around the mandates that are coming our way. Specifically the electrification of our fleet, which is part of the budget conversation. It must be. If we want to achieve the 2027 mandate of only purchasing electric buses and then by 2035, no fleet vehicle on the road that is not electric. We must start yesterday and we are proud to say we already have five electric buses. We are able to electrify those buses with the chargers and a small amount of infrastructure work that we've done and we're going to be chipping away at that. While we're talking about the budget, we'll also be talking about the capital project planning, which will be happening on the same voting day in May. And those will be, those will be co-occurring. So this will help us keep track of the budget timeline. We'll also have an area of the budget that will speak to and address questions around the capital project planning, the capital project 2024. So this is the, the budget timeline. In the past, we've been more official and we've sort of had this adopted by the board. I would just recommend that actually we have this as part of our materials and that we refer to this because it does change and evolve and gets added to. And so I'd hate to vote on something and create something static when we really do have a prod, you know, a product that's, that's ever flowing. So I just, I just, I would just say that's one change that I would say for this year. And then the third agenda item, which is the budget development. So now we'll be getting into more of the revenue pieces of what we know today.
Yes, can we go back real quick? Because historically, as you indicated, the board would adopt an official budget calendar and obviously do our best to hold on to that. If before we move on any further, can we just see if there are any questions for board members about the calendar? Comments that board members would like to make if that is okay by you?
That would be great.
Board members, any questions or comments? I just want to make sure we're providing opportunity for folks to engage. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
So we'll have a couple of slides now on the revenue. I know that NISCIS, which is, I think the, one of the agencies that really support understanding and learning. NISBA, which is the School Business Officials Association, School Boards Association, they all have been pushing out information about state aid. And so I do want to remind everyone that state aid is an important part of our revenue. It usually makes up about a quarter of our total revenue of the way that we pay for our operations. It is a form of taxes. People often say, right, it's this magic money that comes from the state. Remember that this is your state taxes then being delivered back to school districts. So there's local taxes that we pay in the, in the rate and the levy. And then there are state taxes that we pay that come back to districts. State aid is distributed across the state pretty predictably. Most of it goes downstate. And then the remainder goes to all the rest of the state. And there have been a lot of, I'm going to use the word manipulations of state aid to balance state budgets because it is a large part of the New York State budget. And they often do look to school districts and their local revenue streams to support the operations. And again, fund your values and your beliefs and your priorities and the school district that you want to be. This is one of those very interesting years where last year foundation aid made up for some of the loss that we had, that we were all feeling with federal aid flowing in. And a lot of districts were sort of made whole based on a formula that is quite outdated. And this year, this is what it looks like for what they're calling sort of hold harmless, right? So that trying to keep in line with that formula and making sure that school districts are getting their share of state aid. For Ithaca, our enrollment has gone down over a course of 10 to 20 years. Our wealth factor has gone up over the course of 10 to 20 years. Which is good news because that means that a lot of people are moving into this district. That means we have a really robust community. What it means though for state aid is that those aren't positive factors overall, right? And so you often see school districts that have those sort of trends, you'll see numbers like this where they're being decreased. And if you have bargain commitments and, you know, escalation factors in your budgets and cost adjustments that are going up and gasoline is, used to be this and now it's this and the cost of our paper towels were this and now it's this and even, you know, our, our, our costs of just mileage to folks moving in and around the district and then the cost of our people, that's all going up. As you can see, we're not going to ride the back of foundation aid to do the work, right? And that's what Dr. Brown was framing. So the, the state taxes that we get in the form of aid, in terms of the formula aid, which is that first row, that is just going down a bit when operations costs are going up. The next grouping of four, I, I tried to group them into three different categories are the expense-based aids. Those are the aids that we have to spend to receive refund or expenses back, right? And those are typically, they run anywhere from, usually we're in the 50%, so 50 cents on every dollar, but not everything is debatable. Right? So you have to spend more and portion of that is debatable and you get 50 cents on average back on those costs. Right now on the state aid report has our transportation aid a little bit higher than we're thinking it's actually going to come into. And so that's why you see a decrease there mainly because we did receive some rebates for the cost of the buses when we purchased them. So that's not debatable, right? You can't double dip. So we got money from another source. So then what's remaining is debatable. And then, and transportation does fluctuate. We just know that. So we're going to be working, if you see on the, on another slide coming up, I'll show you, we're actually going to be working on both the Boce's aid and the transportation aid because we want to make sure those are accurate. The building aid we've already worked with, that we believe is going to be the number. We've worked with our fiscal advisors. They track our building aid. So that's going to be accurate. And then excess cost aid is all the aids that are related to special education services that meet a certain threshold, right? So students' services as a group, when they cost a certain amount of money, we then get aid on that. Okay. A lot of folks believe that Boce's aid is the special, special education aid. It is not. It's the excess cost aid, which is where we get our, our monies for special education services.
Amanda, what is building aid?
Building aid is the amount of aid that you receive on your debt service, on your principal and interest payments. Okay? Instructional materials aid is that last grouping? And that's, I mean, it's exactly what that says, right? It's, it's sort of what we purchase. Again, we purchase things, we get a certain amount of aid back. So, so that's on our spending. This is not just like, you know, free money. It's where we're spending money to, to receive that. And that's, that's all the technology and textbooks and software. So bottom line, we're looking to the good about, you know, $45,000 on a $150 million operation. So that's, that's sort of today. That's the today report. Can we go to the next slide? Again, you know, I don't think that the, everybody likes to see, sometimes people like to see numbers. Other people like to see it in a chart form. This is just the chart form for you, the graph form for you. So that you can see where we are right now. And again, this is just to reiterate what we're going to be doing in terms of work on the Boze's and transportation aid amounts. This can fluctuate, right? This was the initial governor's run, which is in January. We will get the final run in April. And so we will know more. And so typically when you're building your budget, you're doing your work on your expenditures on one side of the aisle. On the other side of the aisle, as Dr. Brown said, you're tracking your state aid, you're determining how much fund balance you want to use. And also what your levy amount will be. Okay?
Amanda, to that point, I know for my board colleagues who have probably been seeing the New York State School Board Association putting out multiple policy releases and I know there is a policy day coming up soon. I know that our local senators and assembly folks were in Albany yesterday. Also trying to legislate and then push the governor to consider additional state funding. I'm curious in terms of, we've been doing this a while. You've been doing this instead of a decade. What I'm hearing is that it most likely will not change the aid formula for the year, even while there is, even while there is some advocacy taking place. So I'm wondering if you and your colleagues are thinking the same thing that it's pretty much set at this point in time.
I, I'd hate to, I'd hate to say that we're just a glum bunch, but as business officials go, I mean, our, our association is saying that, that's wonderful and we will stand behind these efforts and plan your budgets accordingly.
These are the state runs. Gotcha.
Right? So, so, but they're, again, they're glum. They're not a hopeful. They're not, they're like very rooted in reality. We have had these fluctuations in, as part of our lives. It's just, um, this, this starts in 2019. You all lived, many of you lived the gap elimination adjustment when that was really trying times for state aid. And we're not there yet, but there's, you know, I don't, I don't know. I think the state budget, like all other states, specifically with COVID, there are still waves that are being felt and there are deficits that, that need to be covered. So the next slide, now we're going to be moving on to, so that was your state tax dollars at work, coming back to school districts. These are your local tax dollars at work now, supporting your school districts. We are starting to Dr. Brown's point at the rate. Mainly because of the conversations we have been having, probably I'd say, Eldred, it was probably happened about maybe six or seven years ago, we started to talk about the tax levy calculation versus the tax rate and how Ithaca City School District hasn't been able to really leverage a lot of the new builds that are coming on the books and being able to back into the levy versus use the levy to go to the rate. And so we started playing with that about six, seven years ago. And maybe about four or five years ago, we said, this actually has to be a long range planning strategy. Specifically when the levy, the tax cap levy calculation sunset all of the penalties. And that became a real conversation for us, right? Around when those penalties went away, could we actually look at our rate and then levy the taxes there too, to fill our budget gap, once we knew what our expenditure costs would be. So you know what your state aid is. We have a healthy fund balance. We've been allocating seven, eight million dollars of fund balance to balance our budget. We have other miscellaneous revenue. We have Medicaid reimbursements as listed. What then is the levy amount to, to create the budget to support the operations? And that still includes the good work, as Dr. Brown said, of looking at your expenses and you know, using your program cycle of valuation to evaluate things that maybe no longer are achieving our goals or aligning with our values, right? So when you look at this, this is, I start with this slide because we always like to start with sort of, what does it mean for me as a taxpayer? What is it, what does it mean for me and what has Ithaca City School District done? And I know, Dr. Brown, you know, we could sort of chart when you kind of started in the district and when I started in the district and kind of talk through this slide of that.
Yeah, we've lowered the tax rate. I hope that's the soundbite. And what we're proposing is a three-year fiscal plan. If stabilizing the tax rate now at a number that's lower than when it was when I arrived, we can do the things that this board, this community has set to me and us, they want us to do, including compensated our employees. So our plan, if this strategy that the board has used previously is the one that you ask us to use going forward, we can then ask us to use going forward, we can then plan for how we will build out a budget for the next few years.
I can say this conversation started even before we were lucky enough to get Dr. Brown and Sean and Sean, Professor Sean Everly Bradwell and another longstanding board member who was a teacher in this district, Judy Maxwell. I'm not going to say they were confused, but I can say they were strongly advocating for a flat budget or for the actual budget number to decrease. For those of us on the board at the time who knew something about finance, we were struggling with that question, why would somebody ask that? Don't don't people know that the cost of everything goes up every year? Right, so what we eventually landed on is an idea to continue to decrease our tax rate and to keep our percentage of increase year over year in our budget to somewhere around three percent, right? Because that's most of us can't do that in our households, right? So that's eventually where we landed, we did some math, it turned out that we were doing that, so unless somebody has some other mathematical magic up their sleeve, I've come to the conclusion that that may be the best we can do in public education. Limit the percent increase year over year, especially given CPI and inflation, et cetera. They continue to try and maximize our capacity to send a positive message to our constituents, saying we know where their cranes in the sky. But we also know that your tax rates for homeowners are painful, we're going to try to limit one by taking advantage of the other.
I support Mr. Harris's statement, but I reject the mischaracterization of my understanding of finance.
To squelch any further debate, we'll go to the next slide, Emily, if you don't mind. Thank you. Just again, and we can go back and forth, thank you, Emily, for being sort of the driver on these slides, but what you saw in the previous slide was the tax rate. The definition of that is in that red box on the right, the very, the very last piece. And again, we try to get better and better every year and more user friendly about what these terms mean. The levy is the amount that a school district needs to operate, right? So if you think about what we have for state aid, which was, you know, maybe thirty eight million on the high end plus potentially a hundred and twenty million, and we already have a hundred and fifty million dollar budget. And our, you know, our costs are going up six or seven percent. This is where that gap filler, right? Happens in terms of utilizing the levy along with our fund balance. And we are in a comfortable situation to be able to use fund balance. We do have, we have just just shy of the four percent of the state controllers, that's the maximum allowance that you're allowed to carry. And we also do have the opportunity to allocate monies out of reserves, right? For the costs of like ERS and TRS. And so this gives us sort of that opportunity to look at the revenue to support the operations once we know what those expenditures are. And so, you know, again, we've utilized this strategy a couple of other years when we know that we can, we can sort of lock in that rate and that predictability of multi-year budgeting, which is again, another challenge that the board had given us. It is very easy to do one year to the next budgeting. It is much more difficult if we're thinking ahead, when we're going into negotiations, when we're looking at the commitments in our contracts currently, when we're planning for the mandates. What does that look like four years down the road or five years down the road? We have to be able to be mindful of that. So again, to Dr. Brown's point, this, we feel that this is a strategy that could really set us up to be able to honor state aid, say thank you for those state taxes and then look at our priorities and make sure that they are funded.
One last soundbite. And you've heard me say this before, so I'm not saying anything that I haven't said before. When we talk about compensating our employees in a way where we can continue to recruit, we'll recruit better and retain more, we're looking at and we're assuming if if able to use this strategy. That's the one I floated publicly previously, and that's the one that we're assuming now. Now, any adjustments we will make to this would also be making it to our comments. This is not some behind the closed door negotiating strategy, this is it. The numbers are the numbers, I think we've been so transparent with our numbers that we can just say these things for everyone to hear. I've also been here long enough where our community has asked me very publicly to increase compensation for our teachers, for example, and our aides. And I've always felt like, why can't we talk about what that would look like as far as numbers? And now I feel liberated to be able to talk about. And I would ask anyone to challenge me and I everything is there, everything is public, we continue to move levers, but I'm assuming that we can go twenty percent over three years for all of our employees. If we use this strategy. Not twenty one percent, let me be clear.
I think the silence, Dr. Brown, is us taking the information in. Especially for many of us who've been on the board long term, right? I think two thousand nine may have been my first year on the board. To be seeing a budget forecast for four years that keeps the tax rate. And if I'm not mistaken, the lowest tax rate in the county, maybe one of the lowest in the whole T S T Bosie's area. To be able to keep that tax rate, and I understand that assessment has an impact on that, thus the reason why we had the county assessor. I'm trying to take that in the perspective of it's an, it's an impressive feat. And then to be interested to seeing when we get into the the nuance of of the numbers as well. So I know my silence or hesitation is just thinking that stabilization of a tax rate for four years. Yeah, that's, I haven't seen that, obviously, as you can see by the numbers here. We've debated, had meetings well past midnight arguing over an extracurricular club for thirty thousand dollars and whether or not we could fund it as opposed to being much more proactive and innovative on what our, what we can do. And so I I still need a moment to take that in, and I know it was discussed at finance, but but it's an, it's an impressive approach to try to be this sort of long term planning, especially given some of the other things that we've been doing over the years. So I thank you to Amanda and your team, to you as well, Dr. Brown, but I know, Amanda, how hard you and your team work to sort of come up with something like this and yeah, I I need a moment to.
Yeah, Professor, the board issued us a challenge, we're just responding to the challenge you put in front of us. And we're prepared to answer any questions, clarify anything for anybody. We've spent as a team, weeks in retreats trying to figure this out. So we're confident we figured it out now, we need to have have our community to understand this and then come out to vote in favor of it if they so choose, but yeah, no, we've spent a lot of time on this one.
And I assume it also makes some assumptions that foundation aid won't dramatically be reduced. At least it stayed current levels or some other items as well, right? So title one funds.
Let me just say, we have our, all right, so this comes. Finance has been working on this for a while, right? So Sean, there are three main components that allow us to think like this. One was the, I don't know if it's called APR funds, but the funds the federal government bestowed on school districts as a result of the pandemic, right? And then there's our and Amanda's excellent budgeting and tightening of belts around what we keep in reserve. And I'll say it again, we are lucky enough as a community to have cranes in the sky. So there is more tax revenue to tap into from construction costs. So those three things allow us to do this, that we also should say we survived a global financial collapse. We survived the state snatching away our any day fund, the gap elimination adjustment, and we survived a global pandemic. If something like that hits us again, that's a wave, right? What do they call them, a ghost wave in the ocean that you can't see coming that knocks your boat over? This is assuming that we are not hit with any catastrophes and our executives continue to manage things as well as they have in the years that we have not faced such.
Additional comments or questions from board members or from Dr. Brown or Ms. Verber?
So I'm just, thank you for having the assessment office come last week, that was really helpful, but I I've just been Googling, Googling, can you remind me of the timeline of the new assessed values being released and approved and I just the sequencing of the assessments with along with this?
I think, I think what Jay shared with us was March one, I think when, right? Because I think what he said was, if you want, if you want to build, build on March second, I remember him saying that. Don't start building whatever right before March one, because the value, you will be assessed at what's on that land as of March one, right? And he was, he had said that he anticipates over a twelve percent increase to our total taxable value. It's the first time that it's going to be a double digit number. And Garrick, I think you also asked about sort of how that's made up.
Right, right.
And I think that we were pleasantly surprised that a lot, there was a lot of industry business kind of new builds on there as well.
Oh, yeah, we're, this community is in a very in a feeble position economically, there's no question about that.
And again, the videos are there just for the public. That was, if if you are curious, interested, Jay spent, I don't know, forty minutes with us that night, just really giving some phenomenal data. So that is on our website, that is in the budget development area, and you can click on that for the finance committee.
And that was last Tuesday, just for
Correct.
January twenty third.
So he, his office will be releasing on March first and then, is that right? So then there's a challenge period and
Correct, correct.
And then it's the final sometime, is it June?
So we we send out our tax bills, I'm not sure when his final date is, we actually have to get everything to him. Middle of July, we're approving our tax rate sheet, that's when we bring that to the board. And it has sort of our state aid values and it has the total taxable value and everything is settled. I don't know what his deadline is, but I know for us it's mid-July. And then our, unlike a central school district, our billing starts in October. October one is when we open our billing and that's our first non-penalty tax payment period is the month of October.
So I'm just trying to, so the, so the estimates here are based on what he he thinks is and he probably does pretty well, it's gonna, it's gonna be the
Correct.
Plus or minus a little, a challenge, just a few challenges up and down, but.
Correct, right, so what I do, when I, when I take Jay's information, I try to, instead of, if it's like twelve point more, I usually try to stick with twelve percent and then I can fluctuate that up. I know what the taxable value is from last year, that's my multiplier and that's how I come up with this. And then I have a formula where if I can, I can sort of put the rate and back into the levy then, and that's how I came up with this versus the levy driving a rate. It's just, it's sort of reversing that formula the way.
Yeah, I understand, thank you.
Yeah.
Karen, please.
Well, I continue to thank you both and especially Amanda and her team is on the website, the budget development section is beautifully done. Everything is transparent, has all the archives, we could always go over and just continue to just learn more and more. So there's, there's definitely a lot of information that's always given out on an annual basis and just for our community to realize and recognize that we just have the reference point right there, so thank you. And the different colors over the years have changed too.
I I try to use a different slide deck each year so that when you go back, it's, oh, that was the twenty twenty two and then this is right, so. So hopefully this will be the the theme this year, so thanks again to the communications department for pulling these slides together in terms of the the background so that we know what to use.
Until that point, I believe Karen, you're speaking with this as well, it has a very robust FAQ page. So for folks who have questions, we recommend taking a look and if your question is not answered, please contact the office. And then that question will be answered in relatively quick fashion, it's been a really good turnaround.
It's it's really fantastic, starting anytime to use the let's talk portal. It really helps us catalog and to your point, it does track our responsiveness. So there is sort of a, an opportunity for us to really treat every question with being thorough, but also being timely.
So what we find here for, I'm saying this much more for our community is, it may seem like the beginning of the budgeting process, but it is not. That began before the end of last year. And so it is more than a year long budgeting process. To continue to look at any finance videos, minutes and summaries that our communication team puts together, you'll find additional information. And as the months go on, there will be more of a deep dive into both the revenue and the expenditures. And as you can see from the budget calendar, a particular focus on facilities and athletics for this year in terms of what the deep dive looks like. We recognize that we are blessed, I think as Garrick said, to live in a community that is financially viable. But also realize that this has an impact on taxpayers, Dr. Brown and I had this conversation. Every time I get my tax bill, I'm aware of what it means for folks. And so our goal is to be fiscally responsible and still do the significantly long list of things that we've asked you to do. Still means that we'll have discussion and debate. So we look forward to those both at finance and at on board meetings. And so there's plenty of work ahead before we get to finalize and show a budget to the community that will ask for, let me rephrase that, that they will that they would be asked to vote on.
Correct.
Board members are good? Thank you very much, appreciate it, look forward to the ongoing process, thank you. Our next agenda item is listed here as a discussion. I asked Dr. Brown and Ms. Lily Talke to put it on as an agenda item, so just so we can have clarity, both again for the community as well as ourselves about how we're proceeding. And I don't know if you're going to speak to it, Dr. Brown, if Lily's going to speak to it, I'm going to speak to it, or we just leave it alone for the time being.
We're both here to engage in discussion, but I guess the question would be for the board. Other boards have engaged in conversations about, talking about social media lawsuit, okay? Along with, other boards have engaged in discussions and have directed the team, the executive team to do something, what, then lawsuit, pursue it, engage legal counsel. So we're just looking for a direction on what you wish for us to do, do nothing, pursue more conversation.
The one add on that I would provide is that our attorneys from Bonne, Schenectady and King have advised that if we would like to participate in the social media class action lawsuit, the likelihood of a larger award is much higher the earlier we begin the process or become a part of the class action lawsuit.
So board colleagues, questions, thoughts? Suggestions, recommendations to the team? Yes, Joe?
What's the downside of us participating in just the three of these?
So there is some cost that's associated with it, but then there's also I I presume there might be a downside for some who find social media useful or helpful. But that's sort of up to the, that's really up to the board, right?
So Jill, I'll speak to what I think the downside may be and the very reason why I voted, I did not vote in favor of accepting the jewel settlement. It is under no way, shape or form my support of jewel products for young people. And with the noted commentary, which I'm very interested in having watched a nine year old that I have to pull off of their phone on a regular basis. I'm aware of social media and the impact, but what happened with the jewel settlement is a part of accepting that eight thousand dollars. We agreed to engage in no further litigation. And so my concern as one board member would be in acceptance of joining that class action lawsuit would also mean that you would accept engaging in no further litigation. And so I think it's a little, for me, it's too early in the process to engage that. But that's why we're a nine member board that gets to vote and see how we want to proceed. We could also have BS and K come talk to the board, should that be the want to learn more about what it would look like, get some. I think they have some idea of some estimates about what it may come our way, some school districts. Some school districts received much more in that other settlement, even local school districts than we did. But I didn't, my thought was that it should not pass without the board having a conversation to instruct our team and our lawyers about what we want to have happen moving forward. How did I see you with the microphone? Are you just turning it off?
Turning it on. I must have missed something. Can somebody just take a couple of minutes and explain what is meant by social media? Last time I checked, there are five or six companies that fall under that umbrella. How is this proceeding? Are we just talking about one and calling it social media?
This has been part of my hesitation here because it hasn't been clearly defined from my perspective. And since I have the mic right in front of me, I guess I'll share more. Um, I see this as a distraction from other things we have to do. My job every day is to prioritize the efforts of my team. Um, and this is not one of the things I want to spend our time. We have a hundred and fifty million dollar budget and a capital project to be working on. And I've seen this become a distraction in other school districts for a minimal amount of money.
Is it just about money on the table or is it about implementing some, uh, standards or protections for kids?
Um, what I could do if it's the want of the board is to ask, uh, BS and K to provide us. I believe they have provided us with a one pager, but I'll be sure to send it out again and see if folks want to do it. If there is want to have another discussion, we can do that. Or I can ask, uh, BS and K if things have changed. But, um, it seems to be not the most clear at this point in time. And, um, again, I think to Dr. Brown's point, uh, for $8,000 to sign off saying we will not engage in any other litigation if there's harmful effects of that. Anytime there's agreements like that, I get, um, concerned.
And I think point was made about the jewel settlement and this one as well. You know, these, these companies have very deep pockets. And, um, what they end up paying, uh, is really just like, you know, paying to do business, to, uh, to, you know, pay in a fine. Um, and then what would, what is the actual teeth in terms of getting them to operate differently? That's all unknown.
Well, I checked after we had the conversation with the young people about the jewel settlement and found out that they were doing things similar to, to tobacco settlements of decades ago now.
So Elder, to your point, according to the one page we got before, it was on November fourteenth. It is a class action lawsuit against Facebook, TikTok, Snapchat, Instagram, YouTube, and their various subsidiaries. Uh, BS and K would take a 25% uh, contingency fee on basis and then the rest would come to the school district. And they do talk about it very similar to the jewel litigation as well. But I'll make sure that all board members have this one feature to.
Yeah, this one worries me. Jewel is a physical product. So they mandated that no sales would be below a certain height in the store, right? Within a certain radius around schools. So they were very concrete things. Uh, the internet does not work like that. I'm really con, not concerned, not confused, let's say interested. And what enforcement teeth will come with this?
And, uh, just, uh, because this is a contingency basis, there would be no upfront cost to the district. It would only be a percentage of what, if anything, we get, uh, were successful, goes to BS and K.
And I don't know what the deadline is. I haven't been made aware of a deadline, so it's not like this is the last time. We've had this conversation noted that we have some significant conversations to get to. Uh, but I know educationally speaking for young people, this could be something that is impactful. So we just wanted to make sure we had it on people's radars, that we were not moving without people feeling that they were informed. I'll send the one pager out again one more time and any board member can know if they want it back on an agenda and if that is okay by the board.
I would hate for you to waste your time. It's in the November fourteenth and we can just look at it.
Thank you, Karen. I, I will, I'll just maybe say it's in the November fourteenth. And we did discuss it briefly on November fourteenth as well. Fantastic. In the interest of time, we continue moving forward because we know we have, uh, an agenda item that some people are asking about. This is agenda item eleven point five, a resolution to approve agreement for classroom technology, library automation and other instructional technologies. Um, we wanted to make sure that this was not in the consent agenda so we could spend a little bit of time having a better understanding of what the board is being asked to vote on, especially given the expense. So, Dr. Brown, is this your agenda item?
Uh, unfortunately, it's not, but I will do my best to speak. Uh, Zach Lynn is ill this evening, not able to join us. But what I know is that, uh, we've had many folks ask about us improving and enhancing our clocks throughout the school district. Um, and Zach and his team have been engaging with folks to get, you, how do we do that? And what you're looking at is an agreement with, um, the Cine Rick to move that initiative forward. There's equipment that needs to be ordered, things that need to be, uh, secured. Now, we could take our time. We could go through finance committee and have a more robust conversation and detail this. Um, however, you know, there is a bit of a sense of urgency here, um, because getting that equipment in sooner than later. And we, without losing a month or more, we can get this thing, this project going forward and maybe install late spring, early summer. So that's why, um, and we just got the information and the paperwork and all those things late last week. So again, you know, it's been fourteen years since I was a CIO. I hope I'm doing somewhat of a decent job of explaining a significant lease, technology lease agreement. But again, Zach Lynn is not here.
But is this just about clocks?
Pretty cool. Um, was there something else in it? Yeah, I don't think there's anything else in there, man. Thank you, man. I was like, oh, boy, yeah. It's just clocks.
Yeah, I know. And believe me, I lived with, uh, clocks at Ithaca High School that never, what?
Yeah, scene.
Right. 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 And I, I spent twenty-five years not having standardized time.
Did you have a question, though, Maurya?
I, I know. Yeah.
Okay.
Just watching the more about clocks, Jill.
Seized clocks, half a million dollars.
Well, one, that's one way of looking at it. Another way of looking at it, it'd be $250,000 because some of that, if I'm not mistaken, because it is a partnership with Cine Rick, half that money would be coming back to us next year. But to your point, yes, it'd be an initial $500,000 expense for.
Over a couple of years.
Five years.
Over five years. Yeah. It's similar to, yeah.
Refresh my memory, but I thought, I thought at one point fairly recently, we were talking about clocks that were integrated with a P A system and an alarm system.
That's the system.
That is this.
Yeah, this is.
Because it just clocks. Okay.
No, it'd be a district-wide integration system to be able to.
Yeah.
Provide for our time.
Okay.
And again, I think as Dr. Brown said, at any point in time, the board can choose not to vote on an item. What this would mean is sort of the starting of this project the following year as opposed to getting started on this year.
Yeah.
And so when, um, I had a quick conversation with Zach Lynn, um, he asked if he can put it on the agenda. He said, yes, as long as he'd be here to talk about it. That does not seem to be the case because of illness. Um, we want, that's also why it's an agenda item and not in the consent agenda.
Zach reached out to me, see if I was okay with it. And I promised him I would send it on to my, uh, finance committee, meeting colleagues. And I failed another assignment. So this is why you're hearing it for the first time here. My bad.
I apologize as well because I was told that was done. So we'll connect again in the future, Mr. Harris. So additional questions you want to ask, how, how does the, does the board want to proceed? And you can also entertain motions as well, whatever is the board's desire.
And we currently have some of these clocks.
Yeah, it's a walk. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a nice enhancement. Yeah.
The desire of the board is.
Tell me, Bernie, don't you again, why you're, why we're looking at this now?
Uh, to expedite the equipment ordering and getting the equipment on site, um, so they can be installed. And losing a month or from my understanding, losing the month, which would it take to take it before finance, would delay the project until probably the beginning of next year or into next year. Well, thanks, Zach.
Yeah, we want to hear from him. We would welcome that. Thank you. Yeah, that would help. Zach, feel free to unmute if you can hear me. If you can unhear me, is that what I said? It is late in the.
No, you did say if you could hear me.
If you can hear me. Are we, are we good on our end, Tricia or Emily?
What we got?
He's an IT director. Here he is right here.
Okay, you see him? He doesn't look well.
You've seen a lot of this the last couple of days.
Or can we unmute Zach on our end as well? We'll have to include that.
I'm going to try to help you out here and maybe you can just give me a thumbs up if you come back. Um, the way these BOSI's leases work is that this is one of like three hoops that you have to jump through. If we, the reason why these become pressing is not because of us. It is because of the BOSI's, the Rick OCM BOSI's board schedule. And they have to get approval. I think it's two different levels of approval beyond our level of approval. So every month delay is actually a three-month delay because it takes that much time for these things to be approved. Um, because again, remember, we're part of this larger system who also has their own board meetings and they also have to, to pass things. This clock project, the pilots that you see, um, were started and they have been very well received and they're very successful. And we're continuing to roll these out. And I think we're starting with the secondary because just like we talked about at facilities, the, the request for the analog clock versus the digital clock differs depending on the teaching method and the, the grade level of the kiddos. So this is really going to focus on secondary. It does integrate with the P A system. And this is step one of a multi-layer process that takes much time. So I hope I did that justice for Zach. That is sort of.
Can you, can you all hear me? Sorry about that. Oh, there we go. Um, thank you for graciously letting me, um, come into this remotely. And I apologize for those difficulties. I do understand the irony of the, uh, director of tech struggling. Um, but, uh, so the, Amanda got most of it there. Uh, the main thing is, uh, we run these BOSI's leases through state edu, the state education department. They go to BOSI's and then get reviewed by the state. Um, and the state process can take anywhere between, you know, four and six weeks. Um, so when we got the quotes from our suppliers to put this project together last week, um, we immediately turned it around and, uh, I reached out to your, our board members requesting that we, um, begin this project. Um, for, just so everyone knows this, and I think you all knew that, know mu- much of this. These are for those digital clocks that are in our hallways and in our classrooms. They're also going to be integrated into our P A system. So, um, this should allow us to have, you know, closer to a hundred percent coverage across of our, our buildings. Um, and, you know, these have functionality where you can, you know, message or set alarms or sort of just give us a lot of, uh, ability to, um, create a better communication, um, practices across our buildings as well. So it's been, uh, while I know it's seems as, you know, it's kind of like coming to you now. It's been something that I've been working on for years. And if you walk around high school, you'll see these, um, were installed last summer here. And this is just the expansion of that.
Any questions while we lost Zach? Any additional information that the board needs or?
And Amanda mentioned this is only for the secondary schools. So what's happening with the elementary schools?
Um, so this is, I think we have, it, it, we intend to get to as many schools as we can. And, um, so I, our plan actually is to include elementary schools in this process. Uh, it's, our secondary schools are the ones where, you know, the bell schedules and, um, sort of some of the communication processes have been, uh, more important. Uh, but it's going to happen everywhere.
Just mentioned, it's, this is to expand the system and then to fix the, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, the many that don't work now, is it?
Uh, yeah, yeah. It's ba- basically bringing in a whole new system that's not on a sort of a, sort of this antiquated timer system with like a centralized clock that's tied to, I believe, a satellite and has to get calibrated. Um, instead, it's all going to be digitized and, and run sort of much like, uh, electricity, but sort of run through our, uh, network services.
So Zach, satellite, no, I'm just messing around.
Yeah.
Um, additional questions for Zach while we have then?
This sounds like, uh, I mean, if, if he's looked and done the due diligence and looked at the different options and concluded this is the best way to move forward, I, I, I'm prepared to vote for this now.
And my apologies for not talking about the language in a more clear fashion, right? It is up to or not exceeding $500,000 over a five-year span. I think that's important for us.
Yeah, I'm ready to go ahead.
I will have to entertain motions.
I move. Motion, the clock, was, was it clock resolution? Move it.
It's right in here. You want me to do it?
Uh, yeah, you know, the magic, the magic language.
Yes. Well, I move to approve resolution to approve agreement for classroom technology, library, automation and other instructional technologies with the consent. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Instructional technologies, stop.
Well, Brad, I'll second that.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Garrick. Additional discussion or questions? All in favor? That is unanimous for who is here. Thank you very much. Thank you, board members, for your patience and working through that. I think it was an important conversation for us to have. Thank you to Zach as well. We hope you feel better.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Um, moving on to agenda item eleven point six, which is policy, and I will yield to my colleague, Marla.
Okay, so, uh, Lily, are you going to, yes, okay. So the first policy that we are looking at, um, is the pre-K enrollment for second reading and adoption. Uh, so remind me how we do this. Do we make a motion to approve it and then have the discussion?
Uh, that's how we should be doing it.
Okay, good. All right. So, um, any of my policy committee members here? No. Okay, so I'll move, um, policy five, one, five, zero point one, uh, pre-color, pre-K enrollment for second reading and adoption.
I second.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Karen. And now we'll ask Ms. Talke to remind us of the details for those who are not at policy.
All right, so the state, um, office of early learning has required us to now have a straight lottery for universal pre-K. We can no longer utilize family income level. That's what this policy change is all about.
So state mandate.
Yep.
Questions? Discussion, conversation?
I would just say that, um, uh, you know, a year and a half ago, I was looking into what pre-creative enrollment was all about because my grandson was about to, and my daughter was looking. Um, so I just, uh, and people are going to be looking soon. So I hope we pass this and that I, I recommend that the policy be on the website and that the website make sure that all of the FAQs are clear in relation to and, and are in sync with the policy.
Absolutely.
So you're not just talking about to make sure that we update board docs where we house our policies, but also on the.
On the website.
On the website, because that's where people look.
Yes.
And I remember being confused when I looked 18 months ago. And I think there's potential for confusion now, like, you know, to really make it clear the difference between the Head Start programs and, and the, uh, and the, um, universal pre-K and the special and integrated classrooms.
Additional questions, suggestions, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor of adopt, second reading and adoption? That is, for those who are here, thank you very much. Thank you for the policy committee. Uh, it's, we move on to our next policy, policy 6910, and again, I yield to my colleague.
Well, I believe Dr. Dan Bryman is gonna come down and he'll talk to us about this. And, um, uh, would somebody move the policy? This is again for first reading.
I move policy for
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I said, can I get a second?
Second.
Yeah.
I thought it was in church there for a second. By Jill, seconded by Karen. Uh, uh, Dr. Bryman, can you give us a little more background on this policy?
Sure, sure. Um, uh, we, we brought this policy up because we wanted to make it to be aligned with policy 6701, inventory tracking and ICSD. And one of the main changes in this policy is, um, saying that items for the ICSD, um, they have to be previously inventoried, uh, carry minimum value of 500 and a useful, useful life of at least one year. Another reason was it hasn't been updated, uh, since December 7th, 2011. But really, we just wanted to make sure that both policies were consistent. That's really it.
True, yes.
I did add, um, and we did, I did get a lot of feedback going through policy and we did add some, um, we changed some language and we added a line about recycling as well. That's it.
Questions from board colleagues? Hearing none, we'll call the question for a first reading and reminder, if it is passed for a first reading, we'll go back to policy. Okay. Come back to the board for a second reading and adoption. So for the, right now, we're, uh, only voting on a first reading. So all in favor of approving the first reading?
Oh, thanks.
Fantastic. Enjoy the next policy committee meeting.
Alright.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Tricia, did you get that vote? Great. And then we have one more policy or two more policies on the agenda for this evening.
It's actually combining two into one.
Fantastic.
A new one. Now, we have, what, what would we call it?
We just pick one of the numbers.
Pick one of the numbers, okay. Let's say it's nine, eight, two, three. So I will move to approve combined policies under the number nine, eight, two, zero point two.
Yes.
For a first reading. Second.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Jill.
Lily didn't speak to this?
We combined managerial and confidential.
So it's the same language, just a combining of managerial and confidential?
Yes, we always, they're always together.
Okay.
And we're going through the series and this is part of the cleanup. The first one does the talking, correct, yeah.
We drag this out.
With, with some exceptions.
The policy committee, we could drag this out. Much longer.
I think that needs a semi-call.
Definitely needs an Oxford comma, yes.
Let's make it, well, let's make it
Stay with the two.
Nine, eight, two, zero point two.
Any discussion, questions? Again, this is for a first reading. Uh, I'll call the question, all in favor? That's everyone in the room and Mr. Harris is not here. Pastor, are you good, Tricia? Fantastic. Thank you all very much. Greatly appreciate that. We'll do more on policy work. That moves us to agenda item 11.9. If I am understanding correctly, and maybe I am not, that there are two conversations to be had. One is a vote and one is just an FYI for our future possible vote.
Yes.
Still in your thunder, Ms. Talke?
No, that's it. Yeah, so.
This one we're gonna hear before we make the motion and then we'll go from there, so please.
Okay, so there's two different items, sign, that are back to back with one another. Um, the first is a vote for the calendar shift for a middle school, Boynton and DeWitt caregiver conferences from a half-day afternoon on February 7th to a transition to a full day on March 14th, which is in alignment with the elementary school caregiver conferences. We did an analysis of the number of hours and days and it's, we're still in alignment with New York State requirements in order to do this. And we received caregiver and mostly educator feedback that it was challenging to um, have such a limited amount of time and also to then wake up first thing in the morning and teach. After, you know, some, um, I think just very like real and connected conversations with caregivers where you're doing a lot, you know, it's, it's very different from teaching. So there's that. And then the, the second item is, uh, the high school would also like to do the same thing. Um, but we wanted to give the board an opportunity to discuss, et cetera. Um, because it's sort of a, it's a relatively tight timeline. Um, we are asking folks to just move ahead with the planning, uh, both at the high school and Boynton and.
So this is a, something that we did last year with the middle schools. We got some feedback. Um, we changed the date and we're asking for the board to approve the calendar in consultation with our middle schools. And then we'll probably be coming back at the next board meeting to ask the board to adopt a similar resolution for the high school, but giving everyone some notice to be able to collect any additional feedback.
Right. And by last year, we mean the fall of this academic year, but in 2023, yes.
So the work for us this evening, if it's the want of the board, would be to move the Do-It and Boynton calendar change. And then you will most likely see another version come back, um, at our next board meeting for, at the high school.
And we'd be happy to collect feedback as we do with all calendar changes as well.
Well, speaking of feedback, so in board docs on the, the middle school, uh, ones, there were some comments from, uh, through Let's Talk. Yeah, Let's Talk, and there was one that asked a series of questions, which raises for me, do those questions get, that come to Let's Talk, do they get answered?
Even when they're anonymous, like that.
What's that?
Even when they're anonymous, like that.
Right, right. So how does that happen?
So there's a difference between hidden or anonymous. Um, so for hidden customers, they have provided their email address. There's no way unless there's a serious legal issue for us to find out who it is, right? So if it's like a threat of, a serious threat of violence or something like that, we can never find their email address through K-12 Insight. Um, but through their system, we can respond to them. If it's fully anonymous, we cannot. It's just automatically a closed dialogue.
So these questions on the calendar change were hidden, so they could be
Correct.
Responded to.
They could be, or they were responded to.
They were responded.
I believe they were, but I'll verify, yeah.
Yeah, because the, there were three dialogues, two of them, we saw the response, one, the anonymous one, we did not see a response.
Oh, so that was, oh, no, so those questions were not answered.
Right. They've
So maybe
Oh, I'm sorry. So tho- those were in, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at them in front of me. So that was the anonymous one?
With the multiple questions.
Okay, then there's no way for us to answer them. Otherwise, they could just go back and watch the previous videos because we did discuss them. Who is requesting this change? Um, adults, uh, educators and families. What are the reasons for the request? As I discussed earlier and multiple times before, um, our educators found that it was really challenging to teach the day before or the day after. And everybody wanted more time to communicate with caregivers. Um, ICSD teachers who are middle school teachers or are, um, or elementary school teachers who need to attend their own children's conferences. We've always been really flexible with this. Um, you know, folks take half-days and, and handle it. Um, through that, that's, that's always been a practice. Um,
Most, I mean, most teachers offer, uh, parents alternate times to do a, a conference. It doesn't have to be within that scheduled day and my daughter just did a, a conference over the phone, so.
Yeah, with virtual conferences, it does make things a lot easier and, you know, like for my own child's conference, I could, um, phone in, right? It was just during my lunch break. Um, have other options been considered? Yep, February 7th was the other option that was considered. Um, and some other options certainly would be some other days. Potentially, this just aligns the best with our, um, current practice already with elementary.
So I think it'd be important for folks to know that these sorts of decisions and calendar changes are never made in isolation. That there's been conversation and dialogue, collaboration, getting feedback. This has been, we've been talking about this potential calendar change for months. Um, and I'm seeing a couple head nods from someone in the back who is in agreement that this has been a dialogue. If I'm, I'm assuming Catherine, that's who you're nodding to. This has been a dialogue.
Yeah, the ICA solicited a dialogue with all middle school teachers who have experienced it, did it for the PLC. And I, about thirty people came to talk about what about
Stop.
What were the obstacles that they liked to see out of it and then we collaborated with the two middle schools together, administrators, all nine of the top four that satisfied everybody.
Thank you. Right, and we know that's never, and as Dr. Brown has always said, um, there's never gonna be a perfect calendar. What we continue to try to be as flexible and as responsive as we can. So, thank you. Additional questions from the board?
I love, what is RTI? I'm sorry, I'm sure if you said, yep. Great question, acronym, RTI.
Response to intervention.
Response.
Another term for it is MTSS or multi-tiered system of support. It's really, somebody is, the current instruction or intervention isn't necessarily working and we do something different and track it.
Hearing no other questions, I'll call the question on approval of the change on the middle school calendar for Boynton and DeWitt. All in favor? That is unanimous for the folks who are in the room. Thank you very much. Thank you. Look forward to seeing a conversation about the high school calendar next meeting.
Awesome.
Hopefully.
And I think that's a pretty
Our last agenda item is committee updates. I want to remind our community that our communication team does an outstanding job of providing summaries of each commi- committee meeting, including links to minutes, including summary of key topics that were done and oftentimes links to videos. And so if people are not receiving the information in this committee update, they can always find it going back for years at this point in time. I know we have a couple of our committee chairs here. I will humbly and respectfully ask that we be direct in our commentary and folks please to reach out to us if there's additional questions and conversation. But again, check the summaries page that is located right on the board part of our ICSD website. So, um, to do this in order, uh, curriculum, Adam is unable to be with us. We just had that meeting. Um, that summary will probably be out in the next day or so. It was a conversation, uh, about math instruction. I'm an engaging conversation and I recommend folks participate in a conversation that I heard will continue at the next curriculum committee meeting as well. Uh, my, um, alphabet will be off at this time of night. Maybe we will jump to, uh, facilities. I know I jumped over one, but we'll keep going. Dr. Tripp?
I can be very brief. Sporks and electric buses continue to be topics of great interest for facilities, along with many other things.
And a review of the capital project.
Exactly.
Fantastic. Thank you, Doctor. Uh, finance, Mr. Harris.
More money, more money, more money.
Uh, can you, I, I, I'm sorry, can you elaborate, Mr. Harris, just briefly? You know, fourth more money, right? I know.
Uh, more conversations about our, uh, projected revenue streams. We did invite, uh, Jay, I'm forgetting Jay's last name.
Franklin.
What?
Franklin.
Jay Franklin, who's the, uh, one of the primary assessors from the county and he schooled us on all things tax assessment, uh, including home values, property values, attached to businesses. And we had a great conversation. I think we were all educated about how we can become more confident, right, in our revenue expectations moving forward. Great conversation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Uh, HR committee?
HR committee, well, we continue to get, um, information, presentations and, uh, information from Zach Lind and Cladira Velazquez from the HR office about, uh, the state of hiring. Um, the challenges of hiring and retention. Uh, we do, we have lively conversations with suggestions. Um, and, uh, I, I had outreach from Dr. Anne Burns Thomas, who is a professor uh, at Courtland, SUNY Courtland and is also on the Equity Leadership Inclusion Council. She reached out to me and she is planning to come to our meeting next week to talk about how we might strengthen ties between, uh, the Courtland teacher training programs um, to, uh, in our recruitment efforts. So, um, that's coming up.
Thank you very much for that. Um, that's a great suggestion. I would be remiss if we say we shouldn't include, strengthen our ties between the Ethica College uh, Massachusetts program as well.
Yes.
Little, little self-serving there.
You could maybe just reach out and let me know who I might contact.
I will, I will. And then lastly, policy committee.
Yes, okay. Well, we just, uh, passed a bunch of policies. We passed one for a second reading and we, uh, did a couple for a first reading and uh, as we said, we're working on the 9,000 series now, so we'll be have some new policies coming up next week. I don't know exactly which ones.
Fantastic.
We'll revisit two policies that we passed for first reading.
And just because Ms. Talke made mention of this, we should let folks, again, when I joined the board in 2009, there was not a policy committee. Many of our policies had not been updated in 20 to 30 and sometimes even 40 years. The policy committee has been going through each series. It has taken 10 years to get to the 9,000 series, which is an impressive feat. And I imagine that just means we'll just start all back over again, uh, to review because policies change. Uh, but kudos to the policy committee for the work that you all have been doing. Um, any other, uh, business items from board members? Yes, one thing?
Windus, where are you? But Garrick and I attended the most recent NISP conversation up at BOSI's.
Yeah, I was there.
Okay, I thought you were. And we had a great conversation about the duties and the capacities for them to help us liaison with them. Lots of information that I will send out to this group about, uh, documentation, website help, support. Basically, they are there for us to utilize and they listed a couple of successful efforts that had, uh, happened in the past and I was glad to see that we were on that list for the law we had passed regarding, uh, our nurses having access to the statewide database. So that was pretty cool. Got to see Carolyn again, our friend at NISP. And the coolest thing is, they dispensed to Garrick and I these wonderful pins, which we are now going to share with you all. They say, support the whole child. And we have pens to go along with these pins, but I forgot them because I haven't seen you all in like eight years.
So in addition to volunteering, we get pins. This is fantastic. So in addition to volunteering, we get pins. This is fantastic.
Yes.
Thank everybody. If there's no, nothing more, we'll close, close the meeting. Thank you all. Have a good evening. We'll see you at our next board meeting.